I'm going to go out on the edge and call the meeting to order for the December 28 Hannover Borough Council meeting and ask everyone to stand with us for a pledge of allegiance to the flag and a moment of silence afterwards. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, before I sit down, I would like to...
Do another one.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, let me do it. It's before on the list. I would like to introduce a new member of our team, Margie Lewis, our new Borough Manager. Margie, would you like to stand up? A round of applause for Margie.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I come to you all with about 20 years of municipal government experience, so I'm not new to this world. I just did say this evening, though, you have a lot of meetings here, a lot of evening meetings here. So that's something new to get used to, but that'll be fine, and it'll be nice to see all of you, and you're a very participatory residency, and it's nice to see that. So that's something new for me as well. So thank you very much, appreciate it, Scott.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll go with the roll call, please.
Mr. Fuentes?
Here.
Mrs. Funk?
Here.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Hagberg?
Here.
Mr. Kress?
Here.
Mr. Lockard?
Here.
Mr. Ricart?
Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Dr. Rupp?
Solicitor Shultis?
Here.
Manager Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Whitman?
Here.
Secretary Felix, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, we'd like to solicit any public comment. First, I guess we'll start with the audience. Anyone here that would like to make public comment, please come forward, state your name and address and your commentary, please. Okay. With that, can we go to the online folks, please?
If you're joining us via Zoom, you can unmute yourself if you'd like to address council.
We didn't have an executive session. Okay. With that, I'd like to ask Mayor Whitman. She has several things to go through. Sue, you want to take over?
Certainly. All right. Good evening, everyone. At the top of the meeting, we are going to go ahead here and do the oath of office for two new officers. Prior to that, though, I would just like to bring you up to speed. We had three new officers. Ian Ness and Catherine Baker are probationary patrol officers, and they just graduated in the 121st Municipal Police Academy this month, and they have begun their field training. And Officer Adam Ballinger has completed his field training in August and is being evaluated monthly by the sergeant on his squad until the end of his probation in May. So we have those three up and running, and now we have the two new ones that start the whole process. But they want them up here for the camera?
Yep.
Okay. Is that good, or do you want them to turn a little more? They want to be able to see you on the camera. Actually, just turn toward me a little bit. Is that good? Okay. Now, just repeat after me. Raise your right hand, and the first part is you're going to just say "I" and then your name, and then we'll go from there. Okay? So here we go. I...
I, Hannah Martin.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
Obey and defend...
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And as police officer...
And as police officer.
For the borough of Hannover.
For the borough of Hannover.
I will diligently...
I will diligently.
And honestly...
And honestly.
Perform and discharge...
Perform and discharge.
My duties with fidelity...
My duties with fidelity.
I will conscientiously...
I will conscientiously.
And impartially...
And impartially.
Enforce the laws...
Enforce the laws.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The United States of America...
The United States of America.
And the ordinances...
And the ordinances.
Of the borough of Hannover.
Of the borough of Hannover.
In obedience to...
In obedience to...
The proper orders...
The proper orders.
Of competent authority...
Of competent authority.
And in full conformance...
And in full conformance.
To the civil service rules...
To the civil service rules.
And regulations...
And regulations.
And the laws...
And the laws.
Of said Commonwealth...
Of said Commonwealth.
Relating to police officer.
Relating to police officer.
I will also uphold...
I will also uphold.
Obey and enforce the law...
Obey and enforce the law.
Without consideration...
Without consideration.
To a person...
To a person.
Race...
Race.
Color...
Color.
Sex...
Sex.
Religious creed...
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation...
Sexual orientation.
Age...
Age.
National origin...
National origin.
Ancestry...
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability...
Handicap or disability.
I do further swear...
I do further swear.
That I do not advocate...
That I do not advocate.
Nor am I knowingly...
Nor am I knowingly.
A member of any organization...
A member of any organization.
That advocates...
That advocates.
The overthrow of the government...
The overthrow of the government.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
Or this Commonwealth...
Or this Commonwealth.
By force or violence...
By force or violence.
Or other unconstitutional means...
Or other unconstitutional means.
Or seeking by...
Or seeking by...
Force or violence...
Or violence.
To deny other persons...
To deny other persons.
Their rights...
Their rights.
Under the Constitution...
Under the Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
Or of this Commonwealth...
Or of this Commonwealth.
And I do further swear...
And I do further swear.
That I will not...
That I will not.
So advocate...
So advocate.
Nor will I knowingly...
Nor will I knowingly.
Become a member...
Become a member.
Of such organization...
Of such organization.
During the period...
During the period.
That I am an employee...
That I am an employee.
Of the borough of Hannover, Pennsylvania.
Borough of Hannover, Pennsylvania.
That's it, you are official now.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Yeah. I mean, yeah. What's it? I thought I was...
Congratulations. 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 Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Welcome. Congratulations, welcome. Congratulations, welcome. Congratulations. Way to go. Happy to have you ladies. Congratulations. Yeah. Here's three copies. Consideration.
Oh, yes. Okay.
Well, they had to make sure of first. So now, like, this would be, uh, this would be me on B. I like to consider it, and then I'll fire it in a second. I see it.
All right, congratulations. How's that? Awesome. Next. We need to do the motion.
We need to do the motion.
Oh, that's right.
It's okay. Next, item 6B. I'd like to make a motion appointing Hannah Lee Martin... Go ahead. police officers in the Hannover Borough Police Department effective Friday, January 6, 2023.
Second.
Well, I need to have a motion first, please.
So, motion.
Okay. Tim, second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Back to you, Sue.
Oh, yeah, you're next.
You would have fucked that one in before that, but procedurally, it probably doesn't work that way.
So this evening, I would like to present to Robin Smith... I'm trying to decide not to do the joke. The dam keeper.
Oh, well, yeah. Heard it before.
Don't hear that one ever, do you? The dam's keep caretaker. September 4th, she has worked for us since September 4th, 1987, to December 26 of 2022, 35 years of service. Robin's job duties included maintaining buildings and grounds at the LBS Lawrence Baker Shepherd Dam. She worked frequently with the public and numerous Eagle Scouts to plant trees and install turtle paths, as examples among other efforts which served to make the dams more environmentally friendly to our fellow wildlife. Robin is and always was an animal lover, rescuing many dogs, cats, chickens, and ducks early years. Robin is and always was an animal lover... I just read that. Robin should be commended for her attention to detail in helping LBS to be one of the cleanest and most beautiful dams in the state. Her coworkers tell me they will definitely miss her hard work and dedication to her duties and wish her the best in her retirement. And on behalf of that, we would like to present you with this certificate of appreciation for your many years of service to the Hannover Borough. Thank you.
Get a good picture of her?
Okay, all right. Thank you. Oh, no. I guess we're gonna do it. Hold your...
Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you. Thank you for all your years. We appreciate it. All right. And tonight, we are... I am presenting a special community appreciation. Let's move forward. Mr. Almany.
How are you tonight? Doing great. Thank you.
Tell you what, let's put you over here again so the camera can watch you. So this is the community appreciation. I'm going to read it. Bubba has done a lot of work for bullying prevention, especially with children. He works to help them build their self-esteem and help them go down a good path, amongst many other things. Whereas, they call him Bubba because his name's really Adriano, but whereas Adriano Bubba, Bubba Almany, was born on October 18, 1994, a Hannover native who recently received a 2022 Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award from President Biden, which is one of the nation's highest civilian service awards for his career as an award-winning celebrity bodyguard, bullying prevention speaker, humanitarian, and three-time national champion martial artist. And whereas, Bubba has served well over 4,000 hours of humanitarian community service and leadership excellence across the nation, including serving as ambassador/chairman of the Bodyguards Against Bullying Organization, promotion of anti-bullying prevention through his celebrity security company known as Bubba Almany Security Services, and through Bubba's celebrity basketball game. And whereas, Bubba was personally endorsed by Muhammad Ali's wife, Dr. Khalila Kamacho Ali, as the greatest bodyguard ever, and formally recognized by many other national celebrities. Whereas, today, Bubba continues his role as a public figure promoting strong values, charitable causes, and messages of faith and unity, especially among children, while encouraging them to strive to their full potential. Now, therefore, I, Sue Ann Whitman, Mayor of the Borough of Hannover, York County, Pennsylvania, ask all Hannover area citizens to recognize and commend Adriana Bubba Almany for his nationally recognized anti-bullying and humanitarian efforts, and witness whereof, I hereby to set my hand and cause my seal to be affixed this 28th day of December 2022.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for everything. We have to be proud.
Yes.
Is there anything you want to say?
I would just like to thank everybody here, especially Mayor Whitman, and just encourage everybody to go out and be of service in your community. I'm not sure if some of you may have already been, but, you know, I'm only 28 years old, and I was able to accumulate over 4,000 hours of community service in my lifetime. It's the best feeling in the real to be able to help somebody, to lead people better than what you find them. You know, we're all going through struggles in life, especially around the holidays. It's a stressful time. Just, you know, be, put your best foot forward every day, be the best person you can be, know your integrity and character is intact, and be an upstander, not a bystander. Too many times in life, we see people that are homeless, we see kids that are bullied, we see abuse, we see domestic violence. Help them, you know, pray for them, give them your time, give them your encouragement. It could be an angel in disguise that you, your time alone just could help them. It doesn't always have to be money, it doesn't always have to be high amounts of money to help somebody. Sometimes, just those few words could be a rendering of hope to somebody, and I really appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Happy New Year.
Same to you.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Okay. Continue on here. I have the consent agenda, items A through I. Can I have a motion to approve them? So moved. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. That brings us to the reports of the standing committees, which I guess I get to go first. If we may start with a consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 1359, adopting the budgets for fiscal year 2023 for all of the Hannover Borough accounts. Can I have a motion? Motion. And a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Do we need a roll call?
No.
No? Okay. Those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Number two, consideration of a motion to approve ordinance 2333, levying taxes for the year 2023. A motion?
Need a second.
Motion.
And a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Do we need a roll call?
No.
No? Okay. Those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Number two, consideration of a motion to approve ordinance 2333, levying taxes for the year 2023. A motion?
Need a second.
Motion.
And a second? Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. We need a roll call for that. Dory, would you please take care of that?
Mr. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lockard?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Hagberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
No.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
We have seven voting in favor of and one against, so the motion passes.
Thank you. Item three, consideration of a motion to approve the 2023 Fire Commission budget.
So motion.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Kress. Any discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item four, consideration of a motion to approve the 2023 public meeting schedule, public advertisement.
So motion.
Thank you. Second? Yes? Second?
It was second.
Okay, sorry. Any discussion? All right. Those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Item five, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 1360 for the 2023 miscellaneous fees. So moved. Second. Thank you. Those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. I've got the whole thing on here. All right.
Keep on going.
Item six, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution Number 1361 for the 2023 compensation and health insurance for non-union employees.
So motion.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, consideration of a motion approving the following appointments to various Hannover boards, borough boards, pardon me, and commissions. A motion? And a second? Second. Any discussion? In favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we just deny... Can I say no just to one individual? Do I have to put it all into practice?
Tim?
Yeah, so it was a whole slate.
So it's...
What?
It was a whole slate of appointees.
Right, there are, right.
So...
There's just one that I was opposed.
Well, unless we do them individually, it's either...
That's what I wanted Scott to do.
Why would we do it? I'm not going to change it.
What?
Going individually is not going to really change the result.
No, it won't, but at least it's brought, it's brought out.
You're doing it now.
Well, technically, Mrs. Funk, it's already been approved. I don't mean to be difficult to work with. If you would like to, in the commentary, say you would...
I had asked you before the meeting if we could take it one-on-one, remember?
Can't change the agenda.
Yeah. I think I'm, knowing there's only going to be one vote against the person, I'm going to let it go as it, as it is. I'm sorry, I should have, we should have brought it out in the comments before we voted on it. All right, I'm going to go to item eight, consideration of a motion to approve the continued use of community media services for streaming and Zoom presentations at the council workshop and regular council meetings at a cost of approximately $700 per month. Thank you. Second? Any discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next, Mr. Kress, Public Works and Facilities.
Consideration of a motion to approve the York County Economic Alliance scope and fee for management of the 5.5 million redevelopment assistance capital program grant for the purpose, for the proposed new public administration and public safety facility and to authorize borough staff to prepare an agreement for execution by council.
So moved. Any comments? Those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Kress. Department of Planning and Engineering, Mr. Hagberg?
Consideration of a motion to approve the preparation, execution, and recordation of an option and maintenance agreement with Conalago Township Adams County pursuant to the requirements of the Pennsylvania Department of Environment, Chapter 102.7, for the maintenance and long-term operation of installed PCSM control measures.
So motion.
Any discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Mr. Hagberg?
Consideration of a motion to approve ordinance Number 2336 for the Hannover Borough subdivision and land development ordinance.
So moved. Motion? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comment? Okay, we need a roll call vote on this, please.
Mr. Greenholt?
Yeah.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lockard?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Hagberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
The motion passes with eight voting in favor of and zero against.
Thank you. Next is the Public Safety Committee. Mr. Lockard?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Request consideration of a motion to authorize the proper borough officials to pursue all necessary enforcement actions regarding 206 York Street to address public safety concerns.
So motion.
Second. Second? Any discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No? All right. Motion carries. Item three, the mayor's report. Sue, you're back on.
Before I start my report, I did want to just point out, three of our, well, two officers received a commendation, and our receptionist of the police department actually did as well. We had our annual department meeting in December, and receptionist Juanita Weaver received a commendation for determining the location of an elderly female requesting aid to a third-party caller. Ms. Weaver was able to determine who the victim was and where she was located. The victim had fallen, was injured, and could not get up. Ms. Weaver was able to summon medical assistants to the victim and remained on the phone to reassure the victim until EMS and police were on scene. Officer Robert Kesselring received a letter of achievement for using information he received from a dispatch to locate a suspect vehicle, leading to a quick arrest of the suspect who had fled the scene of a stabbing in November. And Sergeant Matthew Waltersdorf received a commendation for using, for assisting the victim of a vandalism change their tire to their car as they had to travel late in the evening on a holiday. He then used this information, information learned at the scene, to locate and identify the unknown suspect at a different location and obtained a confession. This led to charges being filed against the suspect at a later date. Congratulations to all. Job well done.
Thank you very much.
I've seen Juanita, the secretary, in action. She is...
She's tough.
She is.
I don't want to be on her wrong side.
Yeah. She does a great job.
Okay.
Okay, my report. November 1st, a press conference was held by the York County Economic Alliance in partnership with Main Street Hannover, where $18,000 was awarded to 12 downtown businesses, business owners to improve their small businesses. Senator Kristen Phillips Hill and State Rep Kate Clunk also attended the televised award announcements. to 12 downtown businesses, business owners to improve their small businesses. Senator Kristen Phillips Hill and State Rep Kate Clunk also attended the televised award announcements. November 4th, the Hanover Area Chamber of Commerce held a legislative roundtable with state and local government officials. In the afternoon, Director of Planning and Engineering, Eric Maines, Councilman Chuck Hegberg, and I addressed the leadership of Hanover Group on the state of Hanover. November 12th, I was honored to be part of firefighter slash EMT James Startzell's retirement celebration. Jim had an outstanding 31-year career. He was an active, active in fundraising for breast cancer and muscular dystrophy. It is estimated that he educated 30,000 elementary students in fire safety, and he was the past president of IAFF Local 245, Greater Hanover Professional Firefighters. It was a joy to witness the brotherhood in the room that evening at Bay City. Congratulations, Jim, on your retirement. Hanover thanks you for your service and dedication to our community. November 14th, in continuing their commitment to understanding the healthcare needs of Hanover, Wellspan Health held the Wellspan Leader Connection to partner with community leaders to develop innovative solutions to address identified needs to help community members achieve their goals, health goals, close to home. State Rep Kate Clunk and I attended this event led by Michael Cogliano, Wellspan Vice President and President of Wellspan, Wellspan Gettysburg Hospital. We shared our thoughts and perspectives on how Wellspan can better serve the Hanover community. The markets at Hanover provided a tasty breakfast. November 17th, the Hanover YWCA sponsored the Women of Hanover Network. The ladies had a great time connecting with other businesswomen in Ha, in the Hanover area. And a shout-out to Zeichen de Faraday's Beer House for hosting this event. Following that, um, Women's Networking Event, I walked to the Hanover Area Arc Gill, where hometown history came to town to give a presentation called, "Hanover Puts Its Own Stamp Against Confederate Onslaughts." The informative presenters were Dominique Miller, MLS. She is the Third Circuit Court of Appeals Librarian, and by Jamie Nora Prow, PhD. She is a history teacher and co-producer for Witnessing York. Both ladies are also reenactors. I learned even more about Hanover's role and surrounding areas in the Civil War during this entertaining and interactive talk. Afterwards, they interviewed local history buff Andrew Smith. And this concludes my report, but I also wanted to just point out again that Hanover Borough, I was honored to be able to receive this along with Eric Maines and AJ, uh, from the York County Trail Towns Organization, and we received it for the government, uh, organization helping to further the trails.
Good job. Okay. We good?
I'm done.
Thank you very much. Uh, do we have any public comment from the audience here in person? If not, do we have any public comment from the digital audience, I guess? Okay. If not, um, I'd like to bring your attention to the January 2023 Borough Council and Council Committee meetings. There's a slight typo.